Welcome to the Brookfield Selectments Meeting of May 7, 2019. Would you like to rise and join me in supporting the class?
I continue to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some warrants to approve this evening. I would like a motion to approve expense warrant 5119 for $4,722.91.
Do you want to just do a little breathing?
Okay, and then there's another warrant, 5719, for $164,476.94. And another one for 51019 for $156,387.55.
Do you have a motion to approve these warrants?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I would like to acknowledge reports from different departments. The EMS report of April 29. And the fire department report, April 2019. And the grant writer report of 2019.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to congratulate, we had some anniversaries from the fire department. We have firefighter Paul Pompoa with 20 years' experience. And we have Lemon McCloud with 17 years. Matthew Rodwer with 11 years. Firefighter Daniel Esser with eight. And Michael Scott with one year. And I would like to congratulate them all. Thank you for their service to the town.
Yes.
It's nice to have them on board that they've stayed all the years that they have. I hope they'll continue to serve with us many more years to come. Okay, we have an appointment to make this evening. We have an appointment to make. We have hired our new highway superintendent. And his name is Ryan Papriyan. And he's had his quarry, he checks his quarry out. And the only thing that's pending is his physical. So I'm sure he'll pass that fine. So I'd like to have a motion to appoint Ryan as our new highway superintendent.
You have that motion to appoint?
I'll second.
And do we have any discussion with any of those?
I'd like to make an amendment, actually, that it's pending the clearance of his physical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But otherwise, do you want to discuss anything else?
No, he seems like a pretty skilled young man. I know he was being kind of groomed for greater responsibility where he's at. I'm glad we had the opportunity to bring him on board.
And I think, like I said, Donald Herbert, Donald's been with us for 32 years. And Donald will be a good mentor for him. I'm sure he'll teach him a lot.
Yeah.
And Cindy knows more about chapter 90 than most of us ever care to.
Cindy will get the hot of the heart, I'm sure, also.
As well as the trans.
When is he going to start?
On the 20th.
So, does he need a warrant?
Does he need his physical or can we put our own such a warrant?
Did we actually vote that? So let's vote the amendment first.
Okay, why don't we vote the amendment that this appointment is pending on his physical exam?
Do you have that motion, or motion second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, do we want to do this appointment?
Yep.
Okay, then I would like to appoint Ryan Papriyan as our new highway superintendent.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. When is he coming on board, Ms. Chairman?
The 20th. Ken, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand raised.
That was when he was coming.
Oh, okay, yeah, when he was coming. Okay. We have here, we have some invoice from the CBG grant for FY17 program. And the total amount is $2,206.44. And we have to sign this. I'd like to have a motion for the board to sign this.
Right, a motion to sign this, the UQ FY17 program number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. There's a call tomorrow on status. I'll have to join that and issue these apps.
I'm sorry, what did you?
So, is there a status call tomorrow? Like a monthly?
With CBDG.
With Andrew and, in this particular case, it will be the engineer of the Vinnie's.
Okay, they're having a hard time on the camera here. So, there's a status call tomorrow with Andrew Lo at the firm that's working through which portion of this?
The Vinnie.
The Vinnie property.
Yeah.
So, great. That's going to be the tough one.
Yep. Well, it's more the property act story than the actual.
Oh, really?
As it works out, yes.
Okay.
So, I'm hopeful that we have some feedback on adjacent property.
And now, we have a second CDB grant from FY17. And this is on, the project involves engineering and design of drainage water and surface improvements on Hayden and Height Street and Draper High. And this is an engineering design project. And this is for $2,452.36. And I would like a motion for the board to sign it.
Motion to pay the FY17 invoice number 16.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, with the, oh yeah, FY17. Our next one on the agenda is for request for vacation carryover. And this is for Donald Herbert, he's asking permission to carry the balance of his FY2019 into 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one is from Michael DeWolfe. And he's asking for the same thing. I'd like a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is here. This is to sign the SWEB decommissioning bond. Now, I think, and this is for special permit and site approval decommissioning bond. And Sharon, do you know, could you speak on this, please?
We approved some time ago a special permit for an array, a solar array that snuck in under the wire before the moratorium on 8 Mitchell Hill Road. And this bond is to cover any expenses associated with decommissioning the solar array. Should that happen, either at the end of its natural lifespan, which is estimated to be 20 years, or if something should go wrong with the array, or if there's an abandonment issue, or if the property owner decides they really don't want this on their property. This will cover the costs in the event that SWEB defaults on their responsibility to take the array out and make the site close to its original condition.
Great, so basically protects the town.
It does protect the town. And I should point out that the new bylaw that we're working on will automatically require a decommissioning bond. And that the amount will be advised by John Scanell, our town engineering advisor.
He's been with us a long time.
He has, since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
But you can expect one of these for every solar array we approve from now on.
Now, there is a spot, now, do you have to sign this? It says, "shall be provided," and it says, "the intention of," and is there something else that you have to sign on here?
I'm not sure what you can test the document.
Or is it contacting phone? I think that's what it is. You have Sharon looking at this.
Right, since the select board is in charge of contracts, planning board can advise and have this vetted by town council. We're unable to sign it ourselves.
Absolutely, but the notice is, it asks what?
I see, okay. See me after the meeting, I will fill this out.
Sure.
Okay, she might find it for me.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And now, the next one is the signing on the barly document for the police station. We are, we're signing, we are signing a bond for $1 million and $135,926. And Lani was able to get this with?
2.5%.
It's 2.5%.
That's quite a bit higher than what it was previously.
And this was through the bank. So she was able to get all the funding through them. Because I know that she was out to bid last week, and this is the worst one that came in.
It's solidifying our financials.
Yeah, the interest rates have been going up. Is that a one-year rotating bond?
Yeah, some long years. I know some of the different loans, we even go up to the prime. So every month, they're hopping up.
Yeah, motion's made.
Motion to sign. All in favor?
You can go on, I'll sign it if you want.
Okay, welcome onto other comments. Do you want to?
Let me do that real quick.
Your lines too.
All right, so we're going to talk open space and things attributes around open space. So what I have in front of me are some documents that we used the other night for our open space meeting to verify the findings and put together the final document that's talking about open space and plans. Consensus around the data that came in. What we have is the opportunity before that report gets done, but things that we need to be doing. So one of the first things that we needed to have as a priority this time around was the care of historic markers. And the highway department has agreed this year within the summer plans to do better at taking care of the markers. So that's going to be something that's going to get done. And it needed to get done before we set the reports up. The second thing is the campground. We have three buildings left to be removed or demolished or whatever. And so with that, Kathy's out looking for grant monies to be able to do that. And with the recent success on getting those grant funds to do demolition, we feel pretty good about that. So that's something that Kathy's going to move forward with quickly. And so we wanted to make sure everybody was aware that it's something that we want to get done. If we can get it done this summer, great. If it won't be this summer, it'll be next summer. But it'll be something that we were prioritizing. And then the second piece is that there was a whole long discussion about walking paths, trails and whatnot. Last year, we mowed in a certain way where we had a big figure eight of using the property so that the neighbors could walk. We'll continue that activity this year because it was light. And then, probably the biggest thing that came out of this thing was when that subject of existing trails came up and where are the trails? There was a long interlude where we marked up one of the CMRPC maps, or town maps, of existing trails. And one, we had a group that's going to reform themselves as a committee of sorts to continue to map the map, so that we can have an understanding of the existing trails in town, whether it's on public or private property, and what's going to happen going forward. So as I was explaining this to the district director for fisheries and wildlife, what I also learned is that there's going to be a cutting program on fisheries and wildlife lands within Brookfield in the next few years. It's nothing great immediate. And one of the things that I've discussed with him is that when, again, fisheries and wildlife is not all for trails. However, when they do a cutting program, there will be tow roads that are created. And so this will offer us an opportunity, if we're selective in our approach, that we could have additional marking trails within fishery and wildlife properties that people can take advantage of. So this will be part of this mapping of trails and the like, so people can know where they can go. Because there seems to be a lot of interest in understanding the trails within the town. That's the first. Then, the next day, I ended up meeting with the deputy director of boating access. And we talked about this up on Boat Ramp and what may be an opportunity for the town to take over management of that area. We already do as far as the cleanups and the like. We're in the port of body and the trash pickup benefits of the Boat Ramp as well. So that there's an opportunity where we can actually take advantage of the idea of if we form a committee that is going to manage the beach and associated boat ramps and the like eventually, that this offers an opportunity to collect fees where people from out of town actually contribute to the town's expenses that we've been, been our burden for all these years, where we can actually cover the cost. So, nothing's filed. Tomorrow night at 6:30, we're going to meet in this room of those that are interested in forming the committee. Seems like we have a nucleus of people that have advantage. What I want to be very clear on tomorrow night is what it means to manage what's going on. Because first, the beach, maybe the Boat Ramp at South Pond. But what was also provided us was the opportunity to take the responsibility for North Pond as well. And what was also suggested is the boat access area on 148, that there ought to be consideration for port bodies and trash at that location as well. So, given that that's their interest to have us take on more, yet as long as, what I would propose is that we go slowly to see what we can collect for fees. And again, any of those fees that are collected have to go right back into maintenance of those areas. It's not for town use and other things. So that as long as we can manage this thing, we have an opportunity to at least reimburse the town for the investments.
Do we need to get an article on the warrant to do our revolving fund?
I just want to mention.
I had that last week, and we pulled it because we didn't know where we were. I would say at our next meeting, we should do that. Because if we have a committee, and I believe after tomorrow night, we will have a committee, that we then have a reason to have our.
We need to keep that money if we're going to keep all this going.
Right, yeah. So anyway, so those were successful meetings, and we'll just keep it going.
By the way, that article is in town council's hands because they're trying to figure out how to legally do it. I think you're in a loop with the emails. And even if we can't, even if we can't funnel the return funds from property moving out of a chapter to it, at least if we establish the fund itself, we could receive those smaller local receipts to it.
So that would be the second article that I would like to see back on the warrant, as far as to get APRL lands or JAPR lands to go back into open space. But again, we can put that about another time.
Right, but the big one would be just establishing the fund so that at least these smaller local fees would have a place to go.
Right, and we need that.
So.
And again, I'm proposing July 1st to July 1st for the agreement, just so we can save one year. Let's see if we can make this work. So that's what I have. Again, two successful meetings.
Thank you for all the comments that you've given.
It's good.
Beth, do you have anything on the other before?
I had a couple of things, although one of them, one of them is kind of a pull forward of the request from the CIPC that's under correspondence. The first one is, the first aspect of it is, is we missed an opportunity with the warrant articles. And I wanted to get clear consensus from us before I sent out some communications to the department heads, is that there were some really significant changes between what got presented, in some cases only weeks ago, to the CIPC and what showed up in the warrant articles for the dollars requested under certain capital improvement warrant articles. So, I have my sheets sitting at the house from last week's meeting. I wanted to make certain y'all didn't have an issue if I sent out to the department heads that had radically different numbers in what they submitted for the town meeting article versus what they had presented to the CIPC and say, hey, we need to make certain that we're better aligned on what we present to one committee versus what shows up on the warrant articles. And we, as a board, need to try to have, even if it's a draft plan in front of us as we're going through the warrant articles, and just make it a habit so that we recognize those deltas as we're going through it. So I think that's important. But I didn't want to just, you know, send it out and then not have your concurrence.
I don't have any questions that you do, no.
Now, granted, we have to be clear because in part, our computer plan and the information that we communicated, there's a lot of confusion right now between the advisory committee and capital improvement planning committee, because we have historically funded the computer replacement at a certain level. And that's not, we didn't necessarily give the CIPC as part of the capital plan, but it probably should have, because even though it's the operations budget, it's over the threshold amount, and it really is something that should be presented to them in at least a semi-formal plan.
And they're pushing for an article to, the advisory definitely wants that to be an article, I don't know how you.
What, you mean?
So, it could go either way, it depends. There's no real need for it to be an article, because it's actually a recurring expense. I mean, we usually have 8,000. And I think, where did you land for a request was 14?
20, wasn't it?
Say it again.
Wasn't it 20?
27.
23.
Well, no, we were supposed to split that over two years. That was the discussion that, we had actually had that at one of our, at one of our meetings. What the recommendation was that, that we had was that, yes, it's going to cost us 27,000 dollars to replace all of the computers, but they don't all need replaced between now and January. And I understand the correspondence that we got from Larry, but the fact of the matter is there's a number of machines within the town that can install Windows 10 without a problem. I have a Hewlett Packard, I should have brought it, the things of brick, from like, probably around like 1995, that's running Windows 10 right now, because it has enough memory onboard to do it. Okay? So, what we had talked about and what I had presented to the CIPC had been like 13,5 a year for the next two years for computer replacement. And we could put it on as an article, we could put it on under operational budget. Or we can, as much as I didn't want to delay some of the computer expenditures, since we're not doing some of the other major capital things, the hardware replacement could wait until the fall. Okay, as far as I'm concerned from a finance funding perspective. Because you can pull the switch on purchasing computers that fast. You could buy computers in November and have them fielded by January, and we're done.
That's what advised us when we.
Yeah, so honestly, I think that's probably the direction to go with that. I would still like to see us go back to advisory about ensuring that we have enough from a standpoint of like our recurring service funding in order to at least explore some of our options to get away from the candy. I think that, that does fall under operational versus a capital expense necessarily, because the recurring fees. And it doesn't involve the purchase of hardware, it's just changing from what we have now, which is software as a service, to a different software as a service. So. And then finally, I think the big thing in the CIPC's request is just, I don't have enough time during the business day, which is when they're available or their meetings, to regularly attend. And I'd really like to revisit, if she's willing to accept the appointments, and she attends anyway, potentially nominating or appointing Kathy as our designated to that committee.
And my only pushback to that is the limited number of hours that she has and the things that she's doing. It's a balancing act, so.
Haven't she been going in the?
Yes, she has.
She's been going anyway. And the information she has is pretty critical to the overall capital plan.
And so maybe it makes sense.
And it's just like with, you know, our treasurer's supposed to be an active member of that, I think we really need to have a discussion with Lonnie, even though she's in an interim role right now that needs to be supported by her office.
Well, right now, you know, she's quite good on her plate, so she really doesn't have time right now.
Right.
Oh, yeah, she needs to stay focused.
She wants to stay focused on what she's doing.
So, again, Kathy can play that role.
Then the communication would improve.
Okay, so we can speak to Kathy.
Yeah, so, but I would.
Kathy said, she had some hesitation, but she said if the board had sought and wanted her to do that, that she would do that. But again, it's the hours. And what she said is that basically, she does go to the CIPC meeting when she can, but I think her hesitation is that if she were a member, then she would feel obligated to go all the time. And she's not sure she has all those hours to do that. So, I don't know.
She'd probably make it more frequently than I can. If she makes it to 50% of them, she's doing better than I am.
Sometimes they do last quite a while, too.
Well, maybe what, okay, so let's have Kathy do it, if we need a backup to that.
I can back her up, but.
Right, and I can try to back up that as well. So maybe that's.
Maybe in between the four of us.
Yeah, we can rotate.
Right, so let's see if Kathy can handle it. If she can't, then we need to pony up.
And the flip side is, and I think the committee has been open to this in the past, is that if she has a, yes, those meetings sometimes will last as much as two hours, but there are. a group that understands if you walk in there and say, look, I have a hard stop at, and it's an hour from there, then they will make every effort to cover the, cover the topics that are most pertinent to you, particularly if you communicate it upfront, or either upfront or even in advance of the meeting. So, you know, even if she says, you know what, I only have a certain number of hours, I can only come through the first hour of every meeting, it's, it's great. So.
So if you want to mention that to Kathy, she's there for an hour or so.
Okay. Would be good.
What's next?
Okay. What's next? Okay. I met today with Eric Wyeth, who is the regional manager from Pioneer Valley Commission. And also, I met with Eric Kinship, who is sort of our public accountant. And he runs a firm that helps municipal. And it was the, all the financial team we met with him today. And he, and Eric works with himself, he's been a treasurer collector and he's been a finance director at different towns. So he also, he's very well, very well knowledgeable with municipal governance concern and all of his staff that works with him. And so we all sat down and we told him, you know, some of the problems, you know, that we were having here. And we went through everything. And he came up, if you'll see, he came up with a proposal that you all have here.
Yep. For us early.
If you've not, if you've not, Beth, have you read this?
I have.
And he's, he's telling everything that basically needs to be done here in the town. And he said himself and probably two other of his staff, they will actually be coming here in Rockville to do it. And then Monday, one of his staff members, her name is Laurie Barkas, she is doing the Town of Holland right now, but she will be coming in probably on Monday. She's going to meet with Marilyn Park and from the town. And she's going to show her all around and Laurie is going to take over doing the warrant for us.
So do you need a motion to go forward with the plan?
Yes, I would like to have a motion. I'll make the motion now to hire Eric Kinship. And what he's going to do, he's going to get all of our financials up to date in the town. I'd like a motion to hire Eric.
I have that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, no, I, there's a couple of things that come with this.
Okay.
One, we had CMRPC saying that what they've been doing with those other towns, especially the towns north of Amherst.
Oh, yeah, I have that too.
Right. Oh, man, I did. I said, to have the indication that CMRPC suggests that this is a good idea, to have Pioneer Valley coordinating this thing, what we're doing is getting the benefit of a number of like towns, which is a fantastic thing, so that we can see best practices and hopefully what we're doing forward. What I suggest is that we take the, DeeDee had worked on the updating of the financial policy document through the treasurer's office. That was the last thing to do, get through that document to get a current, the current practices that we have today. And what I would like to do is with them coming on board, to take that document and refresh it with respect to the county's office, to make sure that we're consistent with whatever, whatever the new process is going to be, that we have it documented and that we'll follow.
Okay. I'll answer that. And then Eric Wyeth there, Eric is going to be drawing up all the contracts because the contract from Pioneer Valley. And he said that we don't have to, they took care of like, they went up to bed when they found somebody. So we don't have to worry about killing on anything because they took care of all that. So one of the towns that was involved with them, Hubbard's was, and Hubbard's decided now that they don't need services left open for us. So we're involved. And then after, even after that, they said that they can come in for so much, you know, probably cheaper than what we're paying a town accountant. And they will come into our accounting and that's a decision, you know, that can be made by us. Because he knows that, you know, it's fine, he went between, that you can find people with municipal experience. And this is why he started this company.
I have a couple of quick questions. He gives us three phases. Did he give even an estimate of what the timeline would be for the phases, or is that going to be contained within the contract?
It didn't leave it in the contract because he really doesn't know until, you know, until he really gets involved. And he was, because he's going to work with each individual department. He's going to do the accounting, he's going to work with the collector, the treasurer, and then he's able to go into the water department also because there's a lot of, there hasn't been any reconciliations done for a lot of these departments.
That's the key.
And he's, he's going to go in and meet with all of them. And we really don't know what the timeline is, it's going to take a while. I can, you know, call him and find out what he feels the timeline will be.
Would look like, yeah. I would be curious. I mean, we need to do it.
Oh, yeah, we need.
I'm not saying that we have any option other than this.
Yeah, we need to, we need to do this, so we need it here.
Is there any research included in that?
And he's not, he comes very highly recommended by the Department of Revenue. I had shot out an email to Mary Jane Hand, who's in charge of Boston, and told Beth for progress. And Eric said, she called him right off the bat and she said, oh, I'm so glad you're going into Rockville to help them out.
So with regards to funding this in next fiscal year, because I know we have the funds remaining from a standpoint of the accountants remaining salary and the funds we had set aside for third-party work related to our books at the beginning of the year. So we have the funds to start this. Are, is there any, do we know yet what we need to talk to the advisory committee for, for next year? Or would we just fund it, basically transition the accounting line for salary to be salary or contract support?
Contract support. And what he suggested today, that we should put anything that has to be done right now until we know just what our money here is in town.
Right, absolutely.
He said, we should probably, if we have enough in stabilization, take out stabilization. That's what he suggested.
Oh, right. So if we did have to do some sort of a capital article at the town meeting, that we should go out of stabilization.
Excellent.
That's what he said. It would be a good idea to do this. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion on that.
Yeah, you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah. So is the, is the motion is to authorize our chair to procure the services of the city? And I'll second that.
On the paper?
Aye.
Okay. And then Eric is, Eric Wyeth is going to get us down. He's going to have the contract, so we'll have the contract so that we can sign that off.
So we should be planning on a meeting next week?
Well, I don't know. He didn't really say when he was going to get it, so it's less than.
Do we want to put a meeting on the calendar and just cancel it if they don't have the documents to us yet?
Right.
Okay. We put a meeting on for next week?
If we don't, we can cancel it.
Yep.
And then something else that Eric discussed with me too today was, I was saying, how we have this snow and ice deficit and different things, and we usually use like a special town meeting to clean everything up from FY19. He said, what a lot of the communities have been doing, they haven't been having special town meetings. He said, they have been including this in their annual town meeting. And he says specifying, say, the first, say, five articles and numbering them five and making sure that it says that these are cleanups from FY19. And he said, this is what they've been doing, and he said, it saves a lot of time by putting that into the annual.
And DOR buys in? DOR is.
Oh, yeah. I don't know. Do you have a problem with that, Beth?
No. I've always wondered why we didn't just specify that we're to be doing prior year work.
And that's what he said. He said, a lot of the communities are doing that. He said, it just saves time, so we wouldn't have to have the special at six thirty. Or do you want to start at six thirty and we'll do the whole town meeting?
Yeah.
Start at six thirty and do the town meeting.
You want to start.
It's a question, so let's see if we can. Yeah, but we're without, right?
Yeah, but we have, it's not posted yet.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Well, it's posted in the sense that we've got it and out, it's out there, but yeah.
Yeah, say that it's going to be combined with the annual.
Okay.
Because that was the suggestion from him. All right.
These people sign.
Okay. And then another thing, I had a few questions from the employees today, from a couple of employees wondering whether or not they're going to be getting a raise and things. And that's another question. He said too, he said, we really don't know where our monies are yet, so whether or not we can give them a raise.
Yeah. And I think we need to actually do a clear, formal communication about that, is that, you know, and, and something to the department heads related to all of this, really all of the capital expenditures. I really don't want to have anything on there that's not safety or security related, for all intensive purposes. And to let them know that we need to pretty much level fund everything until this work is done. I think the question that we really need to address is, and we can't make any guarantees because we don't know what the end results are going to be, but that we'll make every effort to, you know, revisit it and if our financial posture makes it a responsible thing to do, to make any changes retroactive back to the beginning of the year. Just like we would with like a police contract or what have you.
Because that's something we're kind of concerned, so maybe we should shoot an email home.
Yeah. I think we need to come out with some formal communication that, look, we're not doing capital on the annual town meeting, we're not doing raises, we're not doing any major, major money, like funding level changes for departments. But that, you know, once we've identified the true posture of the town, provided that we're continuing to be solid, because you know, we've had these issues in the past, the end result of that reconciliation is that we've still been in a good financial position, that provided that that's the case, that we'll make every effort to go with our original plan.
Well, again, schools are living to their budget, highway is the next budget, and they're living to their budget. We should be fine.
We should be fine.
But the reality is, we have to get this work done.
Yeah, we have to get this work done. Now, another thing, did you talk to the library?
I have talked to the library, I have talked to the Hellers as well. If we want to talk about the details of either of those conversations, we really would need to take it to executive session.
Okay. But you said you were going to talk to them?
Yeah. I've spoke to both entities. I have an invite to their Monday, they have a Monday steering committee meeting around the building. I'm going to try to make it to that. There's, there was already some communication between the board of trustees and the Hellers about some, some options that they want to explore. There's nothing settled right now. There's a lot of different ways to continue the relationships that are on the table right now. And I did explain to the library, and frankly, I explained to the Hellers where we sit right now from the standpoint of kind of this fog of war around our, our financial situation. So I don't know that it came to any conclusion, but there's a lot of, at least discussion going on between the different entities.
So if we were to have a meeting next week, go into executive session just after this?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep.
So you want to do like, even if we don't hear Matt from Eric Wyeth?
We'll do a short one.
A short one?
Okay. With a, just related.
Just so we know where we are.
I think that's clear. Okay. All right. Now, is there anything else here in that meeting this morning? Oh, and then, and then another thing we, they had discussed too. We were discussing, you know, how right now Lonnie is the interim town accountant and um.
Or treasurer.
Treasurer, I'm sorry. The treasurer. And they all said, like Marilyn said that she's doing a good job, and DeeDee's willing to stay on as a consultant. And Eric said from what he has seen too, so they, they've recommended that we don't want to go changing anything in midstream. And so I did some investigating today, I went through the town bylaws, and there's nothing that says that we really have to go out and advertise a position of treasurer. So I wanted to make a motion tonight that we point Lonnie Prestasia as our town treasurer.
Yeah, that's second.
He has a motion with that?
I'll second it for discussion if you're making the motion.
I made the motion. And I just, my concern, and maybe we don't record this tonight, but the idea would be, I want to just make sure everybody is on, on the same page, that we're going to work together because we had a similar situation in the past where we made a move like this and all of a sudden, people were concerned about what we did. And I think it's, we can have a conversation around that this is what we're trying to do and trying to accomplish, so that we keep the team pulling together.
They all seem to get along well this morning and everybody's, they all seem happy with what's going on and finally know that things are going to get better physically, and we'll, you know, be able to start fresh from after this was done. They all, they all seem very happy about it this morning and they all seem to get it on fine. And I mean, if we don't vote, appoint her, you know, say tonight, I would just like to vote to appoint her until we approve this financial.
Oh, and again, we've talked about that. Because we put the meeting on until September, into the fall anyway, there would be no changes until that fall meeting. Absolutely not. I mean, just, we can't afford to. I'm in part with that.
What we are concerned about.
I have a number of different concerns. One of them is I think that there's, there's a perception, and I've seen a lot of it, where the tendency to not post positions is really problematic. It, I don't know that there's necessarily anything specifically in our bylaws about it relative specifically to the treasurer position, but it, there are issues with it in just general good HR practice, there's issues with it, I believe. There may be some master general law concerns with regards to not posting positions like that. I really do not feel comfortable appointing anybody to a position that has not been publicly advertised, period. It has nothing to do with the person, it has nothing to do with the position. It's something that I've seen go really wrong in a number of entities that I've been a part of over a number of years. And it's just not good practice, period. Okay?
And the flip side of that is the situation that we find ourselves in.
Absolutely. Which is why I'm like, I'm not in a rush to go post it tomorrow, but I am, I am unwilling personally to vote for a, a three-year appointment for anybody in any position unless we have publicly posted it, reviewed resumes, and done interviews, done, you know, references and background checks. So obviously, she's already bonded, that's not an issue with Lonnie. I'm just not willing to go there on any position in this town. I almost flipped a nutty when even from an internal perspective that we hired people into positions without having post, publicly posted those positions. Okay? I will not sign another wage authorization where we haven't posted the position, period. That's just my personal stance. So, and I certainly won't vote for the appointment of somebody into a three-year responsible position without posting it.
Right. And so the other piece to this is that we continue the way we are until the fall. Again, it was going to be spring, but now it's going to be fall. And again, this individual has done good work and is growing. And so that, under public scrutiny, back to going out to post, she would have a leg out.
Okay. So I would like to, okay, I'll change it. I would like to reappoint Lonnie till after we have our fall town meeting as our interim treasurer.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, you have that motion for sure.
I'll second that.
Okay. On the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then I have, no, yeah, before we get into correspondence, I haven't, did, did both of you get any emails from Deb Roy today? Cheryl, was, did you follow that to them?
I did, I followed it to. What happened is Linda said that you two wanted more information regarding the article of the town.
Oh, the.
Originally on like one line, I had sent it out, but who knows, my emails.
No, I had seen, I had seen that.
Was that enough of an explanation? Because she seemed to feel it was.
I talked to her, I talked to Deb today, and she said they were, they just want to make sure that we're putting it on the budget.
Oh, as far as the, the doors and.
Yeah, what it is, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doors and everything.
Starting in place.
And she said, it would only, our share was only eight thousand of that. And she said that we wouldn't even start paying that until FY21.
Yeah. That email I saw, and I don't see there's any issue with that.
So she was just concerned, because she said she wants, because all the other towns have it on. So she wants to make sure that we have it on also.
Makes sense.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that, yeah. Because like she said, they're going to go out for bid on all of this in the fall, and they'll probably start some work towards the end of FY twenty, and then they'll complete it in FY twenty-one. And that's when our first payment comes in.
But then if we don't have it straightened out, then there are problems.
Oh, well, we'll.
I'll just consider it then.
We'll hope, we have to be optimistic, and we hope that everything will be straightened out by then, I'm sure.
We're fighting the good fight.
Yeah, okay. Now, next here is on correspondence. This is from the Community Development Block grant. And it says on June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the DHCD program representative Cyrus Field and fiscal representative Don Martin will be conducting a monitoring review of Brookfield's FY twenty seventeen CDVG and the CDF grant number zero zero seven nine two at the offices of Central Mass Region Planning Board.
Nigel Lowes, aware.
Okay, and this is another one from Chatter. They just want to make our customers aware that around June first, that WNYT, Channel Three, well, Channel Three now is locating on Inspector Channel one eighty-nine. And then this is another one too from Chatter. This is their financial budget sheet. And we have an attached copy here for Chatter Communications, twenty eighteen financial balance sheet. And this would be available in the Selectment Office if anyone wants to look at it.
Oh, that was the CIPC asking for?
Oh, yeah, that was from Baughfall, so they were asking for Kathy to be appointed as a member of LIG, so the Capital Improvement Committee. So do we have anything else that anybody wants to bring up today?
Second that?
Um, favor?
Aye.